Good evening, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Fruta City Council meeting. It is now 7:00 PM and we're going to call the meeting to order. Deb, would you please call roll?
Counselor Buck.
Here.
Counselor Lenhart.
Here.
Counsel Harvey.
Here.
Counsel Cry. Counsel O'Brien.
Present.
Counsel Bremen.
Here.
For the record, Counsel Bremen is appearing virtually tonight.
From which country?
Israel.
All right. Well, thanks for joining us tonight, Matthew. All right. With that, we're going to move into our moment of silence and pledge of allegiance. If you'd please stand with us. We'd like to take a moment to allow all faiths and beliefs the opportunity for silent prayer. Thank you. If you'd please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We've got an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda?
Changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Lenhart.
Yes.
Counsel Harvey.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Buck.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. We do not have any proclamations or presentations tonight, so we're going to move into public participation. So this section is set aside for the city council to listen to comments from the public regarding items that do not appear on the agenda. The city will not normally discuss or take any action on these items. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? All right. If you step up and state your name and address for the record, then we'd ask you'd limit your comment to three minutes.
My name is Wendy Wood. My address is 1891 J and 6th 10th Road in Fruta, but not in the city limits, but I'm still here. So I just wanted to just bless you guys, just pray and bless you for the new council members and those returning or leaving. So Father, I just thank you for this time tonight. I thank you for those that have served faithfully on this board and those that are coming in. I pray that they would always be mindful that our freedoms, every single one of them comes because of who you are in this nation. So I just thank you that that would be the fear on their hearts, that it would always be about upholding right ruling. I thank you for Janine and James and Amy, and I thank you for the current board members and our mayor. And I thank you that your will be done in this place and in Fruta and establishing your right order in this county and in this city. And I just thank you for this time here, and I just pray that we would continue to uphold Fruta in prayer and that we would continue to make it a shining jewel in Mesa County. Thank you, Father. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak on something not on the agenda? All right. Hearing none, we're going to close public participation and bring it back to council. Our next item is our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time. They come before the council for final action. They'll all be approved. She just had to do that one last time. They'll all be approved by one single motion. So we're going to open this up to public comment. If there's anybody that would like to speak on something on the consent agenda, now would be the opportunity. All right. Hearing, I always have to ask, and there's nobody online that is raising their hand.
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
All right. With that, we're going to close the consent agenda and bring you back to council. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Harvey.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Buck.
Yes.
Counsel Lenhart.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right. Now we've got something that only happens usually once every two years, and that's a presentation to outgoing council members. So we've got three of our council members, Lori Buck, Kyle Harvey, and Karen Lenhart, that have all served in our community. So I personally want to say thank you for that. I'm going to allow each of you guys an opportunity to say a few words. I'm going to start with, well, before I do that, I've got, I'm going to start with Karen. She's got four years in, then I'm going to move to Kyle. He has eight years in, and Lori that has 16 years in. But I wanted to, I've got something a little different to give you guys tonight with Mike's help. It's been interesting, or Deb's help. Is it mostly Deb? Deb and Mike's? Not Shannon? Okay. So I talked to Mike a couple of months ago, and I said, you know, a plaque isn't deserving of what council members have to go through. So I said, what can we do that's a unique item to give to our council members? And so I'm going to start with you, Karen, and then you can talk if you want to say a few words. You don't have to, but if you want to say a few words, you can. But I appreciate your dedication. I know with how your life's been the last few years, you've been dedicated here, and you've given a lot to our community. So I appreciate that. So with that, you may want to stand up because... So it's a unique, made by local artists, and it's something different than a normal plaque. And so if you want to say a few words, you can sit down if you want, or if you want to go.
Well, it's been great. I'm not going anywhere, just so you know. I really love being a part of this, and I've learned a lot, and I appreciate each one of you so much. It's, and I thank you for being supportive of me, and it's been a rough couple of years, but really glad that I've had this in my life. And I hope I'll be back sometime. So can you guys just keep this, you know? But I really, I really just treasure being in the community and watching it grow and being a part of that. And yeah, like I said, I'm not going anywhere, and as long as I can watch virtually. Hey, I think I'll be keeping tabs on everybody. So again, thanks to everybody. I really, I really appreciate it. Yeah. Thanks for the cool thing. This is great. So.
You probably won't be able to hang it on your wall, but I'm sure you'll find a place for it.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. Want me to pass those?
All right. We'll go on to Kyle. Kyle, one of the things I appreciated, and I think I told you that a little while ago, was that you're a thinker, that you sit here and you think and you process, and then you come in at just at the right time to give us other insight. And so I really do appreciate that and, you know, just what you've brought over the last eight years. So. This one's getting heavier.
I was just saying, to get bigger?
Lori's, we have a train out back for Lori's, but.
That's why Blaine came.
There you go, Kyle. So if you want to say a few words. You always talk about being brief, so just, no, take what time.
And I mean, NBA playoffs are on, so just keep it short and sweet. But just grateful for the opportunity to work with community members. And, you know, it's really cool to be a part of, you know, a body of people that are getting together and making decisions and trying to come to consensus and to do the right thing. And I've been surprised many times at how hard people work to do so. And I think it's, you know, city council, even with all of its imperfections and the difficulties, it's a really great example of civilization, people coming together and trying to work through problems, you know, together. So thank you, guys, and thank you all for the opportunity to work with you. And Dave Crisney, I know you're out there. I'm just trying to think if anybody else, but, and staff is amazing. This is a really cool place to live. I love Fruta and grateful for the opportunity. So thanks.
Thank you, Kyle. Just. That's it? No. Okay. Here, let's trade. All right. So Lori. All right. See, we all make mistakes once in a while. So Lori, I just want to say thank you because I think you've been a great mentor. You're always there when I have questions on what I think would be best. And so I just appreciate your insight and wisdom that you've given me over the years. And you're a great example, leading into me becoming mayor. So because of you, I mean, it's one of the steps I took. So. So you can blame me. You can blame me. So this one that I thought was heavy for Kyle is really no one.
Yeah. So I had to write mine down because I tend to forget things. I look out into the audience and my mind wanders. So I wrote it down, so forgive me for reading, but, I mean, I love my hometown, love this place. And I just want to thank everybody who has helped to make it so special. I want to thank my fellow counselors and mayor, past and present, who I'm glad to see you too, Dave. Been able to learn so much from people that I would have never encountered or met, you know, not having served on this board. And so that, if I take away anything, it's what I've learned and how to, that my opinion isn't always the right one, you know? And it isn't always the only one. And so I think that that has been very enlightening and super appreciative. City staff, I mean, where do I begin with you guys? I can't thank you enough for making me look good. Like, it's great. And new counselors and current ones, you'll know when somebody reaches out and you have to answer a question, you are confident that you've got city staff who has the right answers. And more often than not, when they have that interaction, we're really building community trust. And, you know, that's something that is hard to do in bigger cities and bigger governments. So thank you, Mike. You've put together a great team. And then, of course, I have to thank my husband, big guy in the back. You know, he's supported me for 16 years doing this, and we all know that we have to have that support system, whether it's family or friends, to be those confidants and those cheerleaders and just to be there every day. So thanks, Blaine. So the cool thing about this is for the most part, the 16 years that I've been doing this, I really feel like the city council has been a very good representation of the actual people that live in our community. And these are individuals from very different backgrounds, very different peer groups, and very different parts of the country now. I mean, we're growing, right? And it's those differences that, after I've learned over 16 years, those differences are the very thing that makes this local government so successful. And so I'm going to challenge the new members, and of course, you know, the existing, to continue to look for your own answers. Find out what you want to know. And, oh, see, I've lost it now. Yeah. Look outside of your normal peer groups and your normal colleagues for those answers. I think that's the most important piece of this. You know, we're elected to represent everyone in Fruta, not just the people that voted for us. We are responsible to every resident, even those that we may not agree with. And I think the more encompassing that we can be and compromising at times to bring along those different values, I think that will make us even more successful. So I'm just so grateful to have been a part of this organization. After being involved in this process, and I think you hit it, this process really works. And it makes me feel better when I look at big world problems and issues that really somewhere down on the ground, like people are making a difference, and I've been so grateful to be a part of that. So thank you all, and congratulations to the new members, and it's really been an honor.
All right. Thank you, Lori.
That was under three minutes.
I don't think it was, but we'll just start the timer. For the record, Lori talked the longest, but she's against talking long, so we'll just put that on the record. So with that, we are going to take a approximate, I'm not going to say 15 minute, approximate 15 minute recess. We've got cupcakes and other stuff in the back, but I'm sure some of you would like to chat with some of the.
You're missing the cup.
Outgoing members.
Once again.
Don't go anywhere, Matthew. So.
I'll come back to the camera and eat mine.
All right. So 15 minute approximate recess.
Shen.
Wait, Matthew has to see this. Can you see Matthew?
Yes, I can.
Um, all right.
Hello, hello.
Attention, I'd like to call the meeting back to order.
I know, that's what I said, where's the gavel?
Mayor, the mayor is.
Back into session.
Matthew, did you notice the really cool parting gifts that they got?
I did. They kept getting larger and larger.
Matthew and I noticed.
We're going to restart the council meeting.
That those council members received. The cool parting gifts, departing gifts, yeah, we took note. I'm just saying, in two years, yeah, hook us up.
All right, so the meeting has begun again, and we're, it comes to the part of the agenda where we're swearing in of newly elected council members and newly elected mayor. Who's handling that? Margaret.
Would you like to be relieved of your position sooner or later?
Uh, me? Now?
I'm just wondering whether to do the mayor first.
Oh, you want me to bask in it for a little while?
He probably doesn't even know.
Except when I say repeat.
Come find your seats.
These fancy charters they get now.
All right, one thing done. Everybody's probably wondering, Matthew's probably wondering, but when I took over mayor, I decided that we should rotate seats at every council change, just so we're not sitting in the same seat for, like Lori would have been sitting there for 16 years, so. So that's one of the reasons, if you wonder why seats switched, Matthew, you're now on the opposite side of the room, and so that means you're in charge of the timer, just so you know.
All right, good to know, thanks.
That's what happens when you're out of country, we check on you. So with that, we're going to move into our new business, which is our consent agenda. So these are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time before they come before council, that sounds familiar. So they'll all be approved with one single motion. So is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on one of these three items? All right, hearing none, I'll bring you back to council. Does anybody have any questions, or do we have a motion to approve?
I mean, we approve the consent agenda.
My second. Counsel Cry.
Yes.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our public hearings. We've got one quasi judicial hearing, it's a special event liquor permit application, and so we've got Deb Woods here to present on that.
Okay, good evening, mayor and city council, new and old. Deb Woods, deputy city clerk for the city of Frida, presenting the special event liquor permit application submitted by the Rotary Club for the Co-Tuit event, to be held this Saturday, April 23rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Civic Center Memorial Park. The Frida Rotary Club had submitted all the paperwork and fees necessary to be considered for a special event liquor permit. All the documents were included in your council packets. Notice the diagram that shows the proposed licensed premises in the park. It will be fenced with metal and orange plastic fencing, and Rotarians will check IDs and wristbands will be issued to all those who are 21 and over. Rotarians will also be monitoring the licensed area to make sure no alcohol enters or leaves the licensed premises. Frida Chief of Police Dave Kraus reviewed the Rotary's application and issued a statement that there's nothing that would prevent the issuance of the license being requested, and therefore it is staff's recommendation to the city council that the application for the special event liquor permit be approved, subject to the following conditions. One, the entrance and exit shall be monitored closely and continuously by event staff in order to prevent alcoholic beverages from entering or leaving the area. Two, the licensee needs to be aware that they are solely responsible for all state and municipal laws in regards to alcohol possession, consumption, and number three, all other procedures presented by the Rotary Club will be followed. So it is staff's recommended, it is staff's recommendation that, that you move to approve this, subject to all the conditions that I just stated, so that you don't have to repeat them. That concludes my presentation. Lou Mudd with the Frida Rotary Club is present this evening as the applicant's representative, so I'll turn it over to Lou for any additional comment.
Thanks, Deb. I'm Lou Mudd. Get all the permits for the Rotary Club. We've been doing it for a long time, and never seemed to have any issues with alcohol, or intoxicated people, anything like that. In all the years I've been doing it, I think we've had two incidences where security or the police have been involved, and other than that, we have a lot of happy customers, and we earn a lot of money to donate to a lot of good communities, so hope you can approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. With that, we're going to open this up to public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? All right, hearing none, we're going to close it to public comment and bring it back to council. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the special events liquor permit for the Frida Rotary Club to provide beer gardens service for the Colorado to Utah Bike Race on Saturday, April 23rd, 2022, from 11:00 to 8:00 p.m., subject to the conditions presented by staff.
Second.
Counsel Miller.
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien.
Yes.
Counsel Bremen.
Yes.
Counsel Perser.
Yes.
Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Counsel Cry.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you. With that, we're going to move into our administrative agenda. We've got one item on there, the financial reports for March 2022, and so we've got Margaret Sell here presenting on that one.
Okay, so we're typically, the financial reports are on the consent agenda for approval by council on a monthly basis, and just with the new council taking, see, we thought we'd just kind of go over those a little bit more in detail this time, and then if you have questions in the future, you can always ask, or if you would like to see additional information, or you're getting too much information, you can always let us know. But we start off with the cover sheet for this, which is kind of a summary of all the financial information that's contained behind that summary sheet. It's probably, and I don't know, 30 or 40 pages long, but if you look at the cover sheet, it's an attempt to summarize all the data. We start off with our sales tax revenues and for the most recent month, which reflect February sales, we don't receive the money until April, so it's a couple months to find. And you can see on there, the city sales tax is up to. And you can see on there, the city sales tax is up 20% for the month, we're up 14% year-to-date, that amounts to dollars of $57,000 from, or the year, from last year, and then between budget, we're about same amount up. Use tax on motor vehicles is up 20% for the month, but down 4% year-to-date. Building materials use tax is up 13% and 22% for the year-to-date. Lodging tax, we're up 44% for the month, so we should be seeing a lot of tourists here lately, and then 37% year-to-date. County sales tax revenues are up 16% for the month and 15% year-to-date, and then the public state tax portion of the county sales tax is up 13%.
Margaret, I want to make sure we remind everybody, if anybody has any questions when she's gone over it, make sure you-
Yeah, feel free to ask. These revenues are kind of pointed out because there are major revenue sources for the city, excluding charges for services for enterprise funds like irrigation. So they are kind of our key indicators of how our financial situation's doing and comparing it to budget, and are we ahead of budget, well budget, we need to be concerned or not. On the next page, it breaks down the sales tax, that city sales tax by category, and I don't know if you're familiar with any N A I C S categories, but it breaks it down by different trades, retail trade, utilities, manufacturing as examples. And this report gives you a three-year comparison of the changes between 2021 and 2020 of those different categories of trade and what they're doing in the sales tax. So you'll see winners and losers. Retail trade is up 13%, but that reflects a $22,000 increase for the month, and you can see there's some other ones. You know, other services is up 90%, but only reflects an increase of $4,000. So that kind of tells you just how the different sectors of the economy are. I think food and lodging services are broken down a little bit, kind of keeps you in tune with what's going on with our local businesses. And then also down below, these numbers reflect remote retailers, which are essentially retailers that are located outside the city limits of Frida, whether it's online sales, or they're shipping their goods to Frida and charging Frida Sales Tax. So that started and went into effect in 2019, where food taxes collected on remote sales, and those are up 27% year-to-date compared to last year. And like I said, we're experiencing those increases since about 2019 on the remote sales. They represent, what we said, a 27% increase, or about $8,500 of that increase reflected there. Use tax revenues is similar to a sales tax, use tax is based on the point of where you live. So we have sales or use tax on building materials, so if you construct a home in Frida, you're paying use tax on the building materials, and we also have a use tax on motor vehicles. So if you buy a motor vehicle, you're paying use tax, very similar if, as a customer, you're looking at it to the sales tax, but it's a use tax instead. So we track those two. We're up 12 and a half percent for the month on building materials, and we're up 20% on motor vehicles for the month. The next item we look at is community center fund, it seemed to suffer a little bit more than some of the other areas of the city during COVID. Primarily, we had to be closed for a number of months, and then there's reluctance on part of people to come back into that kind of environment while COVID was still, it is still an issue and a concern. So we've been trying to monitor that a little bit more on the monthly reports that you get, so that we can see how we're doing and how we're recovering from those reductions at the community center. And the main sources of community center revenue is it gets 1% of the dedicated 3% city sales and use tax dollars. So 1% is dedicated to the community center that was approved by voters, and it has to go to the community center, it can't be spent in other areas. So a part of its revenue base is that sales tax, the other part of its revenue base is charges for services, your passes, your program registrations, and those type of revenues. So that chart there kind of tries to break down, as you can see, the taxes have been on a steady incline for the last four years, and you can see kind of the dip that the charges for services took in 2021, I think, yeah, 2021. And then 2022, we're starting to recover, we're about 95%, 90% of pre-COVID levels, so it's recovering, but we're still not quite at 100% of where we were pre-COVID. And the next, we have kind of a summary, and this goes to the budget comparison report, which is the long report in the very back, that's about 30 pages long, and this just tries to summarize by fund. The city has, I think, 13 funds, and all of those are kind of treated like an individual business, and they have different purposes, a lot of them are dedicated or designated for certain expenses, and governed by generally accepted accounting principles and a number of different regulations. So this is just where our revenues are as a percentage of our budget for the month or for the year, and you can see the general fund, we're at 20%, 28% of our revenues and 15% of our expenses. So our revenues are a little ahead of budget, our expenses are a little lower than budget. And you can kind of see that all the way down for all the funds, conservation trust fund, just as explanation, is our lottery funds, and those are restricted in their use for open space and parks and recreation type expenses. The economic development fund is a part of the fund that was just approved with the 3% increase in lodging tax a couple of years ago. We don't have any of those monies budgeted going to that fund this year, it's all going to the public places fund. We have the marketing fund, which is the tourism dollars, and that's for marketing and promotion of the city with tourism. The public places fund is kind of the, that 3% lodging tax that was increased is going into that fund in 2022, and that's something that's approved by the council as part of the budget process. But that funds trails, outdoor spaces, and different things that are governed under that ordinance. The community center fund obviously is the community center fund, capital projects is where our capital projects are, our street projects, our parks projects, our general fund, general funded type projects, you will not find the sewer fund projects in there, they'll be in the sewer fund. So there are certain funds that are accounted for a little bit differently. The debt service fund is where you'll find bond payments on the community center. Devil's Canyon Center Fund is the operations and maintenance of the Devil's Canyon Center, and there's very minimal expenses there. With the Museum of Western Colorado, and they're supposed to take care of those expenses. The irrigation water fund, I think that's irrigation sewer trash are all enterprise funds, and so their capital projects are kept within those funds, counted for a little bit separately from all the other funds, but those are kind of the business-like funds of the city. And then fleet maintenance fund is an internal service fund, so it's kind of like a business, but it provides services to departments within the city, taking care of fleet maintenance. So that's kind of the cover sheet, a short, two-page summary, and then behind that, you'll see all the, thank you Shannon for keeping up. Find the charts of the individual numbers for city sales tax, use tax, how it compares over, I think, a five-year period and month-to-date, year-to-date. We had the sales taxes on previous page, use taxes, lodging taxes, county sales tax, the public safety tax, and then we have, we break down lodging tax by what goes to marketing and promotion funds, and what goes to economic development and public places fund, and then also breaking it down by which was the percentage of revenues from verbo type units versus the motel hotel camp ground type units. This is the same chart that we talked about in the cover sheet, except instead of looking at it on a monthly basis, it looks at it on an annual basis. So it's the same kind of data, but it's year-to-date data instead of monthly data. These are the top categories that we talked about on the N A I C S, and you can kind of see where the biggest growth has been in the last few years, in the retail trade area. The community center, this is just kind of a snapshot of the sales tax and the charges for services, and a summary of what those revenues are and how they've changed over the last several years. Very visual right there on the charges for services and that drop that it took in 2020. Go ahead. That's it, okay, and then the last report that you have is the budget comparison report. You know, yeah, there you go. So you adopt a budget in December of each year for the following year, those budget numbers are reflected on this chart, and then the actual revenues and expenses are compared to that budget number. Yeah, I think this one shows a percentage of amounts collected or expended compared to the budget, and then it breaks it down by fund, and then it breaks it down within each, well, within the general fund anyway, by department. So our departments are broken down, public works, police department, administrative department, community development, and there's parks and rec, I don't want to forget anybody. So those departments are broken down, and then by the classification of expenses within each of those departments. So if you compared that to your budget book, you would find some correlation to those. And that summary that we saw on the front pages directly from this report, how much of revenue totals, that percentage is, on that bottom line, and the percentage of expenses. Lets you see at a glance what our revenues and expenses are doing compared to budget. Questions?
You got it?
You got it all right? No problem.
So, I mean, we can inundate you with financial data, or we can make it less overwhelming, you just need to let us know as you go through if there's something you'd like to see that you're not seeing, or if there's something in there that you guys never look at, and it's waste of space.
Any questions for Margaret? All right, thank you, Margaret. So we need a motion to approve our financial report.
I move we approve the financial report.
Second.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Bremen?
Yes.
Counsel Perser?
Yes.
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Cry?
Yes.
Counsel Williams, I mean, Miller?
Yes.
Sorry, I lost my place there. Motion passes six zero.
All right, with that, we're going to move into our city manager's report.
All right, thank you, mayor, members of council. First of all, I just want to officially congratulate you, and I'm excited to work with each of you and all of you as a group. There's, it's an exciting time in Frida, there's a lot of things to be working on, and so we'll get going quickly in these early months. But congratulations, and thank you for being willing to do this. It's a lot of time dedication and love for your community, and that is awesome that you're willing to do that, and that the people elected you to do so. I have a few more updates than normal tonight, just to give you some heads-ups on some things coming up. So this Thursday, we do have what's called the municipalities dinner. This happens maybe twice a year, sometimes three times a year. The last one was held sometime last year, and we hosted it, and Mesa County's hosting it. Although it's called the municipalities dinner, it's all the elected officials for the cities in Mesa County, for Mesa County and the school district that all get together for a dinner, we do general updates. We show that we have Ken Cry, Heather O'Brien, Amy Miller, Janine Perser, James Williams, Shannon and myself, all attending. So I believe, and if anybody else would like to add for any event that we have in our weekly updates or anytime, just let Deb know, she can always get you registered for any events coming up. Next Tuesday at 6:30 p.m. in this room is our city council workshop that'll be focused on training and discussion related to all the fun topics, right? Liability, quasi judicial hearings and ex parte communications, conflicts of interest, and various procedures that we can discuss, and if you have questions, I will be sending tomorrow an email that will have the same information that'll go out in the packet, just to give you a head start of some reference materials that you can look at, and in particular, there's a 17-minute video from our liability insurance carrier, and rather than taking 17 minutes in the meeting to watch that video that looks like it's from the 80s, but it has very important information in it, you can watch it online on your own, and then we can just discuss it in the meeting, and myself-
Is Mary Elizabeth going to be there?
Yeah, so Mary Elizabeth, our city attorney, and I will be walking through the training and discussions with you all in person here, she'll be here as well. And that starts at 6:30 rather than 7:00, and then in May, with our city council meetings, the first week, third week, and the workshop, we will definitely be doing more administrative updates like our finance director did tonight, and some of those topics, and obviously if there's topics you'd like us to give updates on, let me know, and we can make sure to do that. But we're planning to do some updates on capital projects and pending grant requests that we have right now for this current year, in our current year budget. The status of those projects, what those projects are, and the status of the grants, growth and development, just an overview of growth and development, not only the history, but kind of what we're seeing right now and what we're anticipating in the future. And then the priorities in all the recent master plans and comprehensive plan that the community went through processes for and were recently adopted. All that, so that we can lead into, we don't have to find that date tonight, but during that workshop, we'll be looking at, when's a good date to do some strategic planning and setting some goals for the next two years before the next election, in conjunction with all that information, and finding a time where, and it may be in place of the June workshop, for example, but sometime in June, or a time that works better for the group, where we have essentially a retreat or an extended time and meeting where we can really dive into your priorities and where you want to see, in conjunction with the many priorities the community's given us that we have to prioritize, right? And so, so that's kind of what we're leading into, so we, at that, at that meeting, we don't necessarily have to go through all those updates, we can just get right to those discussions and talking about priorities. So in the next, at least two city council meetings, we'll have a number of updates to kind of prepare for that. And then next week, there is the Grand Junction Economic Partnership on next Tuesday, all day long is hosting what's the annual Western Colorado Economic Summit. I'll be speaking at two sessions, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. If you're not registered and you're interested, again, just let us know, and we can get you registered for that. And it's a lot of sessions related to growth, economic development, and the keynote speaker is the economist at CMU this year during the lunch in the middle, and you can also register just for the lunch and the keynote as well, if you can't make the whole day. And then I wanted to show you, I think you've, you've probably seen this, but I'm going to share my screen here. Pull up the website. All right, here we go. So each week, and you've all been receiving emails that give you a link to the weekly update that I put out, and that's one of the, one of the ways that I try and keep you up to date on operations of the city and things coming up, and it's a team effort across the organization to put that together. And since Ciara started, our new communications and engagement specialist, we just did an upgrade to the weekly information update, and I just wanted to walk you through it real quick. Let's see, hopefully this. There we go, it's running a little slow here. But when you go to the current, you can always, there are the archived updates, and those will always be a PDF version, so it's, so it's easy to just scan through, if you want to get information from the past, we have it for years back. But when you click on the current, you'll have the online version or the PDF version that goes in, and the online version is our new, we've only had it two weeks, hopefully you've seen that. It definitely is much easier to navigate if you're on your phone and just scrolling through. The purpose of this is to try and just be able to quickly scan through bullets of different topics, and there's a lot of information there, but, so you can quickly scan through and just kind of see what's happening each week. And so I'll pull that up, there's a number of sections, some of the bigger topics have their own section at the top, and, okay, let's see if this works here. So this was this last Friday's, talk about some of the events coming up, of course, tonight's council meeting, different stories, and then you get into, after you get through the first stories, you have general updates, and we kind of break it down into certain sections, again, trying to make it easy to scroll through. If you ever have ideas or suggestions for improvement, we can, it's an adaptable living document, we can update. I wanted to point out a couple things, we're going to add, there's always a planning and development section, and this essentially has a link to the website where all pending projects, you can get the plans. So whether they're administratively reviewed, or whether they're coming through public hearings, you can always see current projects and the plans and everything that are associated with them, and if you ever have questions, you can give us a call. If they're going through the public hearing process, then we have to discuss those in the public hearings, but there's a lot of administrative review projects as well. This week, we added some information on parking with the two apartment complexes that'll have shared parking, both of those can't open until both are completed. There's a mix of some on-street, but then- There's a mix of some on street, but then there's more parking than what is seen at the current, the one that's going up first. So that's been a topic lately. So we wanted to add more detail there. We're going to add a section starting this week where we start building a frequently asked question site or page on the website. And then each week in the weekly update, we'll have a new question, a new answer. And then we'll, you know, put that question on, on the ongoing page on the website. So it's something easy to refer to if people are on social media or something else. If you have questions, you're getting regularly and we're, we're answering them. The questions people at the city, city staff are getting regularly, we'll just start populating those. And that'll just be ongoing and at least be a place that we can reference those. So anyway, I'll stop sharing and going through that. But I just wanted to make sure you were aware of those changes and what's to come. We are going to roll out two new social media platforms for, for general city information. So Ciara is going to start an Instagram page and a Nextdoor account for the city on May 2nd. Those were the top two requested in the 2021 survey, in addition to what we already are offering. So ready to get those going, which will be great. And we will, of course, have a, a particular focus meant for the type of tool that each one that we use of sharing information. And then our upcoming city link newsletter, we do those four times a year. We're, we're actually looking at doing an online version in the future, likely every month, and then still having the four times sent. People still like that hard copy in, in the survey results that we get. But to be able to do more without increasing that budget, we're, we're looking at bridging or doing both. And then that newsletter, the next one that we have coming out will be mid-May and it will cover the election results, of course. We have some annual notices regarding weeds and trees that, that's in it every year. We're going to have a project, up, project updates for the North Fruta Desert Partnership Program with adding trails out there and then the Pine Street Bridge Project. Pine Street Bridge was a project we had hoped to do early this year and the right, obtaining the rights of way and easements took much longer and the, and finishing the design for the company we hired to finish the design took a little bit longer to get through that. We're actually ready to construct. But at this point in the year, it makes more sense to start in November after irrigation is turned off, rather than building extra temporary bridges and things like that. So we'll be covering that because there were a number of people in the community expecting it to be underway already. And we've put some updates, but making sure we're, we're communicating that effectively. And then of course, events, and then we're going to have a article on growth, just to talk about the history of growth in Fruta, the planned areas of growth and what our current growth rate is, what we're expecting, what we're seeing with current applications. So not pushing any idea or anything, but just the, here's, here's what's been happening, happening with growth over, over time. And here's what's happening currently and where we're, where we're headed. Speaking of that, I just wanted to share and then I'll wrap up, but share just a few points on that data because going through the population data, I thought it was really interesting and we might start putting this in weekly updates and I wanted you to hear it first. But when we did our comprehensive plan, early in that document that was adopted in January of, or February of 2020, you'll, you read that fruit has been growing since 2010. Fruit has actually grown much slower than Mesa County or outside of the city limits or or, and it has grown much slower than Grand Junction as a city. Because we're smaller, there's definitely a feel on a perception that we're, that we're growing fast. And when you look back at history, we have. So from interesting, looking at the state demographers office with the population data there and their estimates over the years from 1998 to 2008, Fruta more than doubled. So in, in 1998, we were 5,535 residents. That's about how many households we have today, just to put it in perspective. In 2008, so 10 years later, our population had grown to 12,019 people. And that, so that's 117% increase in those 10 years. So more, more than double or an average of 8.3% growth on an annual basis during those 10 years. Interesting that since 2010 or from 2010 to 2020, we, our population changed from 12,680 to 13,408 is what the US Census came out. And so that was a 6% growth rate over that 10 year period and an average of 0.9% year over year, 0.91. So just under 1%. We were averaging about 62 new dwelling units per year during that period of time. Now in 2021, we, we had 124 new dwelling units. So it's definitely above the average during that previous 10 year period. We have about 900 units in the process, some form of the process right now. And those are both multifamily or single family dwelling units that are going through the process. Those could take five plus years to build, to build out. Just to put it in perspective. But we do anticipate that we'll probably be right around that. I would say just over two, about two and a half percent growth in the next five years, year over year. So it is getting, you know, more than that, just under 1% than we've seen, but not nearly to the level that we had in that 98 to 2008. Typically, best practices show that it's healthy growth in communities can be anywhere in that one and a half to three and a half percent. So we feel pretty good about the level, but obviously we don't control that 100%. So but we're seeing response to the land use code changes and comp plan changes that were made recently. And the last thing I'll say on that is, so all growth happens within the city limits or the urban growth boundary. And so if you picture the city limits around Fruta and then, and then you go a little bit further on the map and there's a specific urban growth boundary. And when we did the last comprehensive plan, we actually condensed the urban growth boundary. So it didn't, it didn't expand. There were a couple of areas where it did go out, but all, and all in all, it, it was condensed and the, the committee working on that and the feedback of the community was to define, have a more defined edge. So you know, this is the urban area in the city of Fruta. And then this is a rural area of the county. And so everything that develops in that urban growth boundary annexes into the city and infrastructure is planned for that. So right now we are about half capacity with the wastewater reclamation facility. Cause it was planned for the urban growth boundary that was set in 2008. When we condensed it, we actually reduced the developable land in between the city limits and the urban growth boundary from 2,755 acres, which was in the 2008 to 1,984. So, so we, we changed some of the requirements, but we condensed that, that line. And so when people, so we see a lot of development happening, for instance, along 19th road, but that's in the urban growth boundary with plans for those impact fees to pay for, you know, widening of streets with plans for the wastewater reclamation facility to cover that. So that's kind of, that's just a quick overview. I went, well, maybe that was too long. I went over you actually, but we'll talk about this a lot more in the updates that we'll do and dive into it deeper. And if you have questions, happy to cover those. But that's, those are all the updates I have tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. All right. With that, we're going to move into our council reports and actions. So our first one is election of a mayor pro tem. And so I was going to start with that. I've got two of our counselors that have approached me that are interested in serving as mayor pro tem and that's Matthew and James. And so I didn't know if anybody else was interested in that or not. So I wanted to actually start with that conversation before we dive into those two. You know?
Who would also serve in that role if anybody wants?
Okay. All right. So we've got three, no? All right. So with that, so I'm going to go over just some of the stuff. So mayor pro tem and Mike, you can fill in or jump in at any time because some of the roles are again, filling in for the meetings. If I'm not here, we have certain events that we have where we want somebody to represent Fruta that we call on for that. What else? I mean, there's just.
Yeah, I would say that's primarily the, the focus. If, if, of course, in these council meetings, if the mayor's not here, you, you fulfill that role, run the meeting. And the other, the big one is really at events that could be during the day, on the weekends, in the evenings. So sometimes it's, it's good if you have a little bit of a flexible schedule to be able to, and, and it's only if, if the mayor's not able to be there and has been invited to one of these to go represent the city. Of course, at those events, if it's a speaking event or anything like that, we always are here to prepare, help prepare talking points, facts, whatever you need, you know, for not talking, you know, but putting together whatever, whatever the subject matter is, if you want to have that handy. So we're always there to, to help for that. But that's really, I mean, those are really the two.
I think the big one is really, it's like the vice president. So if he leaves the planet, you become the mayor.
You want to think about that. That's the big one.
No, I am not. But I think it should be stated.
That is true. So yeah, if I vacate this seat, then they would take over for that. So Matthew, I'm going to start with you because I know Matthew and I had lunch and that. And so I liked what you said about just doing what's best for the community. And so I got to, actually from the three of you that are interested, I'd really like to just hear why you'd want to be in that role before we make a motion or, or come to that. Cause I think that's the, the right thing to do. So I'm going to start with you, Matthew, because I know you approached me first. So and I know you're probably tired. So it's what, five o'clock in the morning there? What is that?
Yeah, it's 5:20 in the morning where I'm at right now. So these 4:00 AM meetings are a little difficult. Um, no, truly, I mean, I want to reiterate the place where I start is it's truly is what's best for the city. And to help it continue to move forward in the way that it has been. Joe, what we talked about was some of my past experience in terms of running meetings. Having been president or chair of another, a number of large organizations within Mesa County over the past 15 years. But truly, you know, I would love to serve in that position, but it's truly about what's best for the city.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go to you over here on the mic.
Yeah. I mean, not to just jump on what Matt said, but that would be pretty much my same thing too. I mean, running a meeting would be something I can do. It's in my wheelhouse. And I think it was more for me, if it was a necessity. If there was something, if, if I was needed in that role, I would be more than happy to serve in it. I believe that Matt and Ken would be more than capable of it. So I have no problem with, with either of them or me or whoever we'd need to have do it. So I'm just offering myself if that would be something that, that you would need me for.
All right. Thank you. Ken?
I'll echo what James said. I think James or Matt would also be excellent. And I don't care who, who is it? I just threw my name in the hat because somebody asked me to. So, so I'll throw my name in there. Yeah, I mainly from, as they said, just to do what's best for the city. The person asked me because I, I'd been on council the longest. So I think that was the main reason. So I have some more history. You know, more, we've been through, you know, some stuff six years ago that we haven't talked about the last couple of years. So that's the only, only thing I think that's different there.
All right. Thank you. So the other question I want to ask, this is like a candidate forum, isn't it? Cause I want us to make an informed decision. So one of the things I know I've, you know, I haven't had a chance to talk to Ken. So I wish we'd have gone to lunch because that's, we get a lot done, right? Matthew is, you know, again, I, I think all of you guys have the heart to serve because you're already here. But I want to know kind of what long-term, if you're interested in serving as mayor or if, you know, if it's just to fill in a role for two years. So I mean, let's go around the room again, Matthew. How's that? Put you on the hot seat first.
No, that's fine. Well, I'm taking Lori's seat. So I'm kind of at the beginning of the row there. Yes, there are some long-term goals there if to answer your question. You know, in terms of my longevity in Fruta, they're absolutely there. Fruit is my home. We chose to live here. Kind of want to continue to serve it however I can.
All right, James?
Yeah, for me, fruit is home. We're going to be here and for quite a while, at least until that one gets to college and probably goes to the other side of the state that are, or the country that our other ones at. So gosh, heart is definitely in Fruta. And if this works out, I would definitely try to move to the next level. To be honest, I would have to step back though. I feel if these two are wanting to step into the mayor role at some point, they do have the experience and I would follow their leadership. I think that Ken or Matt, with the experience that they have, where they would probably serve better in that role at this moment, if they do look at moving forward into mayor. If that was something that was on their heart to move forward, I wouldn't want to be the one that would step in the way of that. I, my role would be to do it if neither of them were wanting to move forward. Or if there wasn't somebody else that wanted to do it. So I think it would probably be more appropriate for them if they wanted to move into mayor.
All right. Thanks, James. Ken?
Uh, I don't have any aspirations past city council at this moment. Wouldn't be against it if, if, but who knows two years from now, Ken? So I am also like James, I, I'm more than happy to hand it over to Matt if, if, I mean, I, I don't have any aspirations to be mayor pro tem. I'd just do it if, if I needed to. So yeah, and I don't have any plans to be mayor at this time. So.
All right. So what I'm hearing, if I, if I sum this up right, Matthew, are you on board? Cause I can't make a motion. So somebody else is going to have to make a motion, but are you, we need a motion for this.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we nominate Matthew Bremen for mayor pro tem.
Second. Counsel Bremen? Counsel Bremen?
You got to vote on this one.
I couldn't hear you. It's a bad time for me to be quiet.
You get to vote first.
Did you say yes? Counsel Perser?
Yes.
Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Counsel Cry?
Yes.
Counsel Miller?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien? Motion passes six zero.
All right. That's one down. Thank you, Matthew. We'll go over some stuff when you get back. I'll get you, I get to fill you in on all the extra stuff that Mike didn't tell you about already tonight. So all right, we're going to move into boards and commissions. So we're going to have this discussion as probably the preliminary, just kind of to give everybody an overview from your packet on all the different boards that we serve on. And just, we're going to be talking about this more at the workshop. And so, but I want to give everybody kind of an overview of what, what they are, when they meet. Cause I know certain schedules may not be able to meet for everything. I did, I think I've, I've been pretty open with where I want to serve on this time. As most of you know, it, it probably takes me 25 to 30 hours a month of my role in as mayor. And so there's a few boards that meet less frequently, like police commission. The, what is it? Board of adjustments, Ken? I know you're on that one right now. Those two I'd like to go on. And so that's just kind of put in the back of your mind, just because of freeing up some time for me. And other than that, well, arm wrestle, I know Matthew's given an interest in some of the boards with me, but what I normally do is say, what's a board that you're passionate about? Because we really want you to be involved in doing what's best for our community. So is there certain boards? And I know some of you already serve on them. I know Janine serves on the downtown board. And so that's something that, you know, if it's something you're really interested in, then staying on that, then it's okay to arm wrestle over which ones you really want. You know, we're not going to, you know, hold that against anybody, but we have a lot in here. If you look at how many boards and we do have some that the city staff fill in on. And so Mike's done a good job of putting which ones are vacant for sure right now. And so if you want to stay on certain ones, that's what we'll discuss next week at our workshop. So any questions or?
Do we get to arm wrestle for a police commission?
But maybe we'll talk about it. You know that. I'm always open to it. So.
Mayor, I will add that, you know, we, you can see when these, these boards meet, how often some of them are as needed. We tried to get the location. Sometimes they rotate, but that's in the far right column. If it requires an elected official or not. So the ones in the top half are typically ones that elected officials. So the ones in the top half are typically ones that elected officials have been on. You can see there's a couple that don't necessarily require it. I will mention that Museum of Western Colorado prefers it. So that, that probably should just be a yes. And elected official prefers an elected official over a staff member. And then the bottom half is just really more for awareness of some of the ones that the staff are on currently. I will mention that as early as maybe even this week, but definitely next week, there are some of these meetings occurring where we have vacancies. Not that you have to make those appointments tonight, but the, the main important one is the Grand Valley Regional Transit Board that Lori Buck was on. They've been asking almost daily if we picked yet, even though I told them we want to get there yet. But, but there's a meeting next week. I think it's on the.
Yeah, Heather wants to arm wrestle me for it. I saw her, she just did this, so she's ready to arm wrestle for that one. So I'll give that one to you.
No, I, I would say that, that we had all kind of just had a conversation a little bit ago. We've already kind of agreed on a few that we might be able to just kind of knock out right now. There's some, I don't know if it's going to help that move forward. But we've all kind of said, hey, how about you, this one? I mean, there are a few that we already kind of talked about. If you want to talk about it now, can we do that or do we have to wait?
No, it says council reports and actions, so we can do.
Well, and actually, I might change, Joel, because I, I thought that police commission was on Tuesday. It would make my life easier with other obligations that I have with the school district if I had just on Tuesdays. And I was thinking police commission was Tuesday, but it's the museum board that's on Tuesday. So I might actually want to take the museum instead, just so I can just have those extra meetings on Tuesdays. I'd like to stay with Parks and Rec. I really enjoy it. It's, it is a passion area for me, all of the trails and the expansions and stuff.
Mike, are you making notes?
So. But, and planning commission has been hugely educational. It's been so great to get all that information once and then have it again at council. I think that was a great way for me to kind of learn so much. But, but I'm, you know, I'm willing to give that up so I can take on something else. And we had someone who was might be interested in planning commissions.
All right, then let's go around the room. Let's put Amy on the hot seat.
I mean, I would, my like passion one would be the historic preservation. I mean, kind of clearly from my campaign, I think I made that pretty clear. I have a passion for the history of our town. And then I think planning commission just kind of makes sense for me as far as, you know, my knowledge base and just learning that end of, of things would be really great for me. So those would be my top two picks. I'm very flexible about where I land and my schedule. You know, I know daytime availability is harder for some people. And my job is typically harder, like for nights and weekends. My people, my clients are more demanding for evenings and weekends. So with, you know, the historic preservation being during the day, that is appealing to me as well.
Okay, and if anybody wants to chime in if their, their ones are interesting. Ken, what do you think?
What is this drainage board? Is that what that is? Mesa County CDBG?
Oh, the CDBG is the Colorado, Heather knows what that is. It's a block grant and that's through Mesa County. So that one I'm willing to stay on. Again, that's a quarterly one, but that's, that's with grant dollars for Mesa County.
What was the other quarterly one that you wanted, Joel, to free?
This, the police commission.
Yeah, but I thought there was a third. What was the one that?
Board of Adjustments, that's as needed.
Yeah, that's the one you should take.
I'll bite you for that one, no kidding.
Apparently someone's.
I, I think Wednesday of the month. I mean, I would be interested in GJEAP. I don't want to take it from anybody that wants it.
Well, that one, I want to jump in Matthews on, because so Matthew currently serves on that. And let, listen to what Matthew says, just so, because he serves on it for his regular day job.
Right. And I'm certainly, you know, I represent both ProStar, who has a board seat as well as the city of Fruta. So that's, you know, I'm happy to give up the Fruta portion of it. And then I would just be, but I'd still be on it through ProStar.
No, no, if you're on it and it doesn't, there's no conflict of you serving in both roles, no point in, in me going to that. I was just thinking of what was left. Are you, what about the chambers? Is that something you're?
Matthew and I, you're going to jump ahead to Matthew. Matthew would like to take over that.
I have it. So it sounds like maybe, it sounds like maybe. Livability Commission and the Transit.
I mean, Arts and Culture Board, which is vacant. I'm also would like to see about tourism. So I mean, there's several in here. So what else are you interested in or is that? AGNC or?
Oh, well, yeah, that's the thing. James, I think is interested in that. I need to talk to AGNC because I'm currently on their board, the executive board.
Yeah, you're, you're currently one of the few board members as well as the Fruta rep. So I actually don't know the answer.
When that expires and if he can step in. I, I don't go to a lot of the meetings. Bill Carlson is my alternate, so.
I think, I think, I think it's changeable.
I think so, too, yeah. And I think James would probably be able to participate that more, you know, just.
It's kind of my.
It's more in your wheelhouse, yeah.
So I would like to do that.
And I'd happily give it up. So I'm fine to do anything that's left over as long as it's not too much requirement during the middle of the day.
So Grand Valley Transit sounds like a good.
Yeah, that's fine.
Now, let's go around the room. James, well, before we, yeah.
Sure.
So when I originally came tonight, I was wanting to do museum and I was looking at police. And then we, we spoke and she wanted the police. You wanted the police. I'm going to just go ahead and pass that one. You guys take that one.
Do you want the museum? Because I could probably, I could.
Well, I, I really like those guys and I've worked with them on stuff before. But it seemed like it worked better for you, for your schedule. So what I was going to say is that open up, I could do the Parks and Rec. Is that one that you're, one that you want to stay on? Or what were the ones that you wanted to do, Heather? Like perfect world for Heather right now? What would, what were the ones?
Well, it's a woman's prerogative to change her mind.
Well, yeah, we all know that.
Arts and Culture was open. That's the one that Kyle's been on, right?
Yes, so yeah. Bacon.
I might arm wrestle you for that.
I would, I could see her arm wrestling everybody.
But yeah, I, I would like to keep Parks and Rec.
Okay, sure.
But I can be open to other things.
Okay. And I'm really open because Arts and Culture was one I thought would, I'd really like to do, too. But immediately, Janine obviously comes to mind when it, when you think of that. So I don't know, I mean, whatever.
That might be fun to arm wrestle you.
So we have, so if, so we have Arts and Culture, everybody wants, but you also remember we have Livability Commission that is vacant and Grand Valley Regional Transit that are vacant.
Now, I think that maybe the arm wrestling needs to happen for those ones because those seem to be the ones that nobody's jumping on.
We already won since she took planning.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
I can, I can do livability and downtown.
Are you willing to give up Arts and Culture then?
Yeah, I can give it up.
So the other thing is I wanted to, I wanted to give up, and I didn't know if anybody's interested in the tourism advisory. And I thought of James just because he served.
I was on it before. If, the only reason I didn't is because I saw your name was on it.
No, I would, I would be glad to get that one.
Culture is probably good because you and I are going to be involved with their stuff anyway. So I think that would, that would work really well, sure.
So I've got Parks and Rec and Arts and Culture. That's on Monday and that's a Wednesday.
You got downtown and livability.
I'll do tourism and we'll see if I can do the GDB.
I think you can.
If that's the case, can you find out, Mike?
I think honestly, I think it, the AGNC, I think we can. I'm pretty sure we can assign whoever we want to be that liaison. And then that just changes their board structure, which I don't know if that means you're a board member, but you're definitely our member. And then they have to do some, whatever they do for the board, so that's fine.
However, that would work.
So then, Ken, you're, you take the Grand Valley Regional Transportation one.
Yes.
Look at that, we got this done. We don't have to put this on the workshop.
Who has? Who has a museum?
Me, I'm doing that one, too. Did you want it?
No, I'm doing Arts and Culture and Parks and Rec.
And Parks and Rec, okay. So I got three, I got three.
AGNC only meets quarterly, though, right?
No, it's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
All right.
I'm good. It's all right. I mean, museum doesn't, they don't meet as much, right? Yeah.
For every fourth Tuesday.
Right.
But virtually.
Right, so I guess keep in mind that if something comes up with somebody's schedule, we can always have this conversation. And Matthew, since you're up, I want to make sure you're not sleeping. Are you okay with Chamber of Commerce? And what's the other one? You're, you're on the GJEAP.
GJEAP, yeah, yes, I'm A-OK with that.
Okay.
Okay, so just a quick recap. I have Heather, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Arts and Culture Board, Amy Historic Preservation and Police Commission, or sorry, Planning Commission. And then Ken, Grand Valley Regional Transit. And then Joel, CDBG Police Commission and Board of Adjustments, Matthew, GJEAP and Chamber, James, AGNC Museum and Tourism.
Does that leave anything?
Oh, and what about Janine?
Janine, I had her higher on my paper, sorry. Livability and Downtown Advisory Board, yeah.
So that starts in May?
Well, it depends.
Next meeting.
Starts when that meeting is.
So the second Tuesday of the month, or second Wednesday of the month, I'm thinking I'm in May. Okay.
Does that cover everything, Mike?
I think that covers everything. I don't believe we're missing any, so.
And obviously I'm new to this, but is Deb just going to send us some updates and let us kind of know our schedules?
So Deb will send it. And I think also, like, depending on who's, like Shannon's in charge of some of those. So this depends on who is.
Yeah, some of those we have, if there are city boards and commissions, we have staff liaisons who will make contact and get, and then some of these are outside agencies. And one of us will introduce you to that board and get you plugged in. So watch for some emails to tie you up with that. And we'll, we'll figure out when the next real meeting is and.
So we don't have to have a workshop, no? We're just.
Right, yeah, that's true. We marked one thing off the workshop, so I have to change.
This is great.
All right, any other questions on that?
I will have a conflict if the next Arts and Culture is May 11th. I already have a meeting, so, but I can, you send me an email, I'll figure that out. Okay.
All right, so the next one is, we're all set on that, right, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is a discussion and possible action to reschedule Tuesday, June 21st to Monday, June 20th.
And this is because we have the Colorado Municipal League Conference that really need to travel down Tuesday. And we have a, we have the best, biggest group we've ever had, which is exciting. So I think there's, let's see, if I remember right, I think Janine, James, Amy, were you going to that, too? And Ken and Heather and Matthew.
I'm going.
Wait, for what?
Oh, sorry, not Heather, yeah.
CML conference.
Yeah, was this the one that's like June 20?
June, yeah.
So I got a question about that one because I need to be somewhere on the 24th, 25th. Can you go for part of it?
Yeah, you can, you can. You can kind of get there and leave when you need to with your schedule, so. Great, so we have a big, basically, we have a big contingent going. So it would be very difficult to have a meeting. We wouldn't be able to have a meeting that Tuesday night. But if we move it to Monday, then hopefully that works with having a quorum.
I can't be there on the 20th. I have a memorial service.
Okay.
Does anybody else have a conflict? Because the other option is we have, we have to cancel it. I mean, we're still, but we probably will have enough. Otherwise, we have to pack it into other meet, the other meeting of the month.
We don't have any public hearings scheduled yet, but we could be scheduling some. And we wanted to do it ahead of time so we don't post notice of a, like a public hearing and then have to change that. So if, if, if we have a quorum for Monday, we definitely don't have a quorum Tuesday. So if we have a quorum for Monday, I would say we schedule it. If there's a light agenda, you know, then you can always cancel it ahead of time, but, or later.
That doesn't matter, right?
No.
Well, it is.
We're local. What holiday is that?
Well, there's Cheesecake Day or something. Oh, Juneteenth.
That's, oh, it is Juneteenth, yeah.
So is anybody opposed to moving it to the 20th? All right, so I need a motion to move it to the 20th.
Mr. Mayor, I move we cancel the June 21st city council meeting, move it to June 20th, 2022.
Council Perser?
Yes.
Council Williams?
Yes.
Council Cry?
Yes.
Council Miller? Council O'Brien?
I'll abstain since I can't be.
Oh, Council Breaman?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, now we get to move into the fun part. Council Reports and Actions on anything that everybody's been up to. Mike, I wanted to, for the GJEAP lunch next Tuesday, I know you got me registered for that. I'm not going to make it because we're going to be out of town for that memorial service this weekend. And I don't get in till like four in the morning on Tuesday, so I'm not gonna. So I didn't know if we could transfer that to somebody else if anybody else wanted to go to that.
Sure, we can. And if, if we could, we could have a staff member take that place if, if there's, I mean, we have a, I think we have a few going. No, I, I, no undue pressure to be at this one. We, we've got great representation. But if anybody would like to just hit the lunch, it sounds like we have an opening, so.
Right, so yeah, so if you are, if somebody might want to from here, or if you have staff, then then let's get that at least ticket covered. So the only other thing I have, and then we'll go, I usually go last, but I figured I'd start with that while I was thinking about it. We had chamber board meeting, so everything's just getting ready for gearing up for Farmer's Market. And there's, in the process still of trying to decide the best way to set up a nonprofit, how, because they're a 501(c)(6). And so they can get other grant opportunities if they're, if they have a 501(c)(3). And right now, they're looking at setting it up for student scholarships and some other community events for that. So they're in the process of doing that. So that was one of our, our bigger discussions at that meeting. So that's all I have. I'm going to go to Matthew.
GJEAP, we've already talked about the Economic Summit next week. We are still in the search for a new executive director. That search has expanded a little bit. The next board meeting is 7:30 tomorrow morning, your time, 4:30 my time today. And I don't know if I'll be able to make it just because I'm trying to work on paperwork so I can get back into the States. So.
I'll be there, Matthew.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Heather?
That's it for me.
I saw you turned it on mute, so I thought that was the cue. All right, Heather?
This stuff that happened in planning commission will be coming before council, so nothing to report.
Okay, Amy, anything to report?
I have nothing to report at this time.
All right, Ken?
I'm on Colorado National Monument Association Board. And they are finally, they have all the funding and the bid's been awarded to redo the amphitheater up there, Saddlehorn Amphitheater, that'll be a big deal. The plans are pretty cool. It's kind of a clunky little facility now, but it should be cool for people to use that in the future. And I think rental of that facility is pretty cheap. Also Downtown Board, Matt, we talked about Fruta Fourth Friday.